The Village Board of Oregon meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025. Well, just a reminder to speak clearly into your microphones. Yeah, I'll take a moment to welcome the new village attorney, Larry Conpakey. And I also click to call a roll.
Beshin.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here. Thank you. Item three, approval of March 17th, 2025 Village Board Meeting Minutes if correct and corrections and mistakes, any staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tim and Amanda, questions, comments?
I have a correction or a question.
Okay, Tom.
On item six of the consent agenda, or just below it, there's an underline Higgins and Kirchdorfer. I'm not sure what that's associated with.
I probably just forgot to remove the underline, but I can for sure do that.
What is Higgins and Kirchdorfer doing there?
Well, yeah, let's see. I probably need to delete that. And I will delete that.
Anybody else?
Thank you for reading my minutes.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion by Higgins, second by Peterson. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, communications, items for discussion and our possible action. A public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? Public comments. Seeing on moving on, item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $807,385.52. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Uh, Jason and Amanda. Questions, comments on the vouchers? Lynn?
I have two questions. First one is on page 23. Um, I don't know what to give you as far as a number, but it's this M25 Gal H R E L C D. It's like kind of in the middle of the page.
The $2,000 one?
Yeah, the $2,000 one. Thank you, Carleen.
That would be us, and I believe it is a specialty-sized water meter. I'll confirm that for you, but I think it's a large water meter.
Interesting. Okay, and then my second one is just on page 32. There is a listing of, um, kind of in the middle, it's like $1,599, $1,599. It just says Assistant Public Works Director, Public Works Director Administrator. Are these what these people are costing me, or is there something? Do you see what I'm saying? Right, like right kind of where your cursor is there?
These are all the charges that go through our U.S. bank credit card. So that's probably the person that made the purchase.
Oh, I see.
That we're not paying our staff by credit card?
It's just a joke, just a joke. Perfect. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, Tim and then Amanda.
I had a question on page 15, item 10919. Meters transponders, what was that for?
That would have also been water meters. That's a water meter purchase.
Thank you.
Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going back to page 31, um, uh, kind of, you know, maybe 10 down from the top. Ammonia TNT. Got to ask.
That, that is a chemical purchase for our wastewater treatment plant. They are not making explosives. I'm not sure why it was abbreviated that way.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Oh, and then I had a second one, actually. On the next page 32, kind of 10 up from the bottom, there's like three charges for weather Any idea?
Yes, that is also, this is a real Lauren one tonight. That is also a public works purchase. That is an app that we use for the weather, and it's charged to three different accounts. That's why it's shown that way. So it's charged to Parks, Public Works, and then I believe Snow and Ice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? No? Okay, we have a motion by Manke, second by Peterson. This is a roll call vote.
Beshin.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
Kirchdorfer.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
And Higgins.
Yes, thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Items 6A through 6G, staff recommendation, motion to approve consent agenda items as represented. We have a motion by Jason, a second by Tim. Questions, comments on these items? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, reports of committees, item for discussion and our possible action. A ad hoc public transportation committee, one presentation from Representative of Sustained Dane, I'm a Mobility Access and Transportation Security Grant, and we have Spencer with us tonight.
Hello. I sit here for this, right?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, awesome.
Speak clearly into the mic, and you could state your full name for the record, please, Spencer.
Sounds good. Hi, everyone. My name is Spencer Bearman. I am the Development and Partnership Manager with Sustained Dane. Today for you, I have a short presentation on the MADDY grant, round two. So MADDY stands for Mobility Accessibility Transportation and Security, and would be funded through the University of Minnesota's MADDY Department. This, I think, is a really cool opportunity, and I'm excited to share a little bit more about that with you. But before that, I'd love to share a little bit about what I'll be sharing, then myself as well. So for the agenda for this presentation, we'll be doing a little bit of a review of today, giving an introduction on myself, and then talking about the proposal strategy, what that means for the writing schedule, and what that means from needs from our partners, which includes you all, and what next steps for that would look like. Next slide, please. So with that, a quick present introduction to Sustained Dane, we are the sustainability nonprofit of Dane County. We focus a lot on different ways to inspire, connect, and support community members in accelerating sustainable actions for community well-being. So if you go to the next slide, a little of what that looks like for us is holistic sustainability. So, you know, sustainability is really awesome, but we kind of think if it's not good for the people, and if it's not good for the economy, it's not going to stick around. So those are really kind of the triple bottom line for how we like to approach sustainability. Our program areas cover all sorts of ground. This list is not complete by any means, but some of our three main areas are education for climate solutions, energy efficiency and affordable multifamily housing, and food waste reduction, and an increase in recycling. But as you can tell, also transportation sometimes, so that's what I'm here for today. SRF is a fantastic consulting group who we are partnering with for this grant submission. They are 100% employee-owned and are a full-service engineering consulting firm that's headquartered in Minneapolis, Minnesota. They also have regional offices here in Dayton County, in Madison, Wisconsin, Fargo, North Dakota, Bismarck, Omaha, Chicago, and Tallahassee. And they are leaders in, committed to improving the future of public and private infrastructure systems through a multidisciplinary approach that combines planning, engineering, landscape, architecture, and project delivery. So with that, SRF, they cover a whole lot of ground. That list has a lot of words on it about all the different things that they cover, but basically if it's involved with transportation, they, they're involved in that as well. So the basics for this program, again, MADDY stands for Mobility Access and Transportation and Security. The overall goal for this grant program would be to create a connection for transportation in secure communities to support access to jobs and amenities. So this program runs through the Minnesota University of Minnesota Center for Transportation Studies and was originally funded through the Federal Transit Administration. Currently, we are on round two of this funding focus. Round one was focused much more on urban communities, while round two is a little bit more focused on interregional connection. So, you know, connecting bigger areas like Madison to Oregon and things such as that. So our proposal for round one was not selected, but it was ranked very highly. So basically what we heard back from that review of our round one submission was submitted again, but for round two. So we were initially focused on that urban connection, but our proposal was really much stronger for that regional connection. So, you know, the lack of regional transit and the potential for bidirectional demand within Dane County is really large and present, and we really think that this can make a large impact. And our biggest technical issue with our round one submission was that they asked for a little bit more specificity with regards to the plan of the idea. Next slide, please. So again, this grant would take place in two phases, with phase one being a plan for connection for a transportation insecure population. It would be awarded for $100,000, and then three projects would be selected. While phase two would be funding for a pilot project of planned implementation for $600,000 with one project selected out of the three phase one selected projects. So with this, you know, there's the, the dollar amount on the stage. So something that I really want to emphasize is that for phase one of this submission, there's really no barrier to participation in this phase. If we apply and if we get it, there will not be any money that needs to be allocated from this board. And then with phase two of the presentation, sorry, I was talking a little far from the mic. For phase two of this, we have a lot of really great support from Madison Transit, Madison MPO, and these different groups that are really looking to make this type of connection happen. So all that is to say that, you know, when thinking positively when we get phase one, when it comes to phase two, what this would look like is that there's a lot of support in helping to secure that additional funding. So taking a look at the project org chart, Claire Lexak, who is the executive director of Sustained Dane, would kind of lead the charge in organizing this initiative, and then having members of SRF Consulting, Sustained Dane, the different transit planning committees, as well as the different advisory boards from the different communities that we work with would all have a hand in this. And, you know, we're really hoping that Oregon would be a strong cornerstone of this coalition in helping to build this bidirectional transportation. Next slide, please. So the scope of this work would involve basically four different tasks, which would be the kickoff, the community outreach, the plan development, and then the final plan creation. So with that, in a little bit more detail, the task one of the kickoff would look like, and you can remain on that last slide as well for this, would look like creating an advisory board. That would be done through Sustained Dane and SRF Consulting, and then as well as holding kickoff meetings, which again would be held through Sustained Dane and SRF. Community outreach is kind of Sustained Dane's jam, so we would be more than happy to take that on for the task two of it as well. Task three would look like the plan development, which would include review of best practices by SRF, development of the framework for creation of transit connections, which again would be SRF, identification of strategies for implementation in selected communities, and then the development of the draft plan by SRF. And then finally, for task four, that would include sending a plan of review, or a plan for review by the advisory committee here and in the different communities that we're working in, meeting with the selected communities for plan review, and then developing a final draft of the plan. Next slide, please. So what that would all mean from you all is that, and some deadlines to kind of keep in mind when it comes to this submission for this funding opportunity, there would be a submittal deadline of April 30th. So the primary needs from our partners is to review and approve the content and letters of support that we would send your way. So with that, there would be an anticipated communication via email to come on April 14th, which if I'm looking at the date correctly, is a week from today. And then finally, there would be a funding decision anticipated in early June. Yeah, so that was a very quick rundown of what this funding opportunity looks like and kind of what we would be looking to bolster with this additional funding. My contact information is there, Spencer Bearman, so Spencer@SustainedDane.org, and then Sam Record from SRF Consulting would be Srecord@SRFconsulting.com. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if I don't know the answers right now, I'd be more than happy to pass those along to Sam at SRF, who is just kind of a guru on transportation.
Good. Anyone?
Do you want me to comment first? Would that be helpful? Okay, so, thank you for that. That was great. You know, you'll notice that there isn't a ton of detail in what exactly this is going to look like, because that's part of the first part of the grant, is planning what it'll look like. But it has to basically connect, like us and Stoughton is involved too, has to connect us with Madison, because that's where a lot of the services are for people who need these, the transportation. And so this is designed to get people in more rural areas connected with services in more urban areas, and that's why we're applying for this. So a study, you know, that we'd have to get a planner in and look at that, and this would help pay for that, and then they'll design something that would go to the round two, if that makes sense.
Carleen?
So I'm going to assume then that the advisory committee would be our current transportation committee in, in terms of the Village of Oregon.
I believe that would be correct.
Yeah. So there's no new kind of infrastructure needed?
No, no. Well, we'll have, you know, any, any member of the transportation committee is welcome to attend to these meetings, but generally we have a representative go to the meetings, and to date, that's been me, but, but yeah, that's, as long as somebody's there, and then any major decisions would, of course, we have to approve by the board. We're not acting without your approval on anything. That's why I had them come today, because the deadline is the end of this month, and I want to make sure that as a village board that we are all still good with applying for this and proceeding.
Lynn, please, and then Jason.
This is maybe a really silly question. Amanda, are there going to be other funds needed in this, and can we estimate what that will look like? Or is this grant going to encompass everything that we would need should we receive it?
Well, I, I will get to, I was just going to say, my understanding is that it funds a pilot program, and then beyond that, we'd have to decide where we want to go from that, but Sam, correct, or I mean, sorry, Spencer.
No worries, both asked names. Yeah, so with that, the phase one of round two, which is the application we're submitting now, for that round one, there would be $100,000 awarded, and for that round one, there would be no additional funds that would be needed for that.
Okay.
So when it comes to phase two, that's when it becomes really nice that we have support of some of these other transit authorities, like Madison Transit Authority, Madison MPO, who are already kind of looking for ways to help make connections to more rural communities.
Okay.
So they would be great resources in helping to secure those additional funds that would be needed, but I don't think that the funds that need to be secured for phase two of round two should, you know, stop us from applying for phase one of that.
Got it. Thank you.
Jason, I think.
Yeah, I just want to say this sounds like a fantastic opportunity. Phase one sounds like a lot of benefit with no cost for us, other than the time of the people on the committee and, and you, Amanda, and the folks working on it, and it definitely meets a need, a real need that we see in the Village of Oregon, and, you know, I think it'd be great to move forward, and when we get to step two, we'll make decisions there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Spencer, what's the source of this funding, the state, federal, or?
So previously, it was funded by the Federal Transit Authority, kind of channeled through the University of Minnesota's Department of Transportation. I think currently it is just provided by the University of Minnesota's Department of Transportation. Where those funds are coming from, I don't quite have a good answer for you, but I could definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you.
I need some action on this one. I think a motion of support would be beneficial.
Okay. Tim and Carleen, sounds like we have a marginal support. Additional comments, questions? Please.
I, I was just going to say, just as a side note, this is in addition to the 5304 US, or Wisconsin DOT grant that we are doing, because that'll focus more on local things. So we can do both, in case you were wondering.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Higgins, second by Beshin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Spencer.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, unfinished business, items for discussion or possible action. A resolution number 25-12 authorizing issuance of establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $4,720,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2025B. Staff recommendation, motion to pursue as presented. Jason and Amanda. This was covered in our packet, as well as the report from Ellers. Are there questions on this item, or discussion, I should say? No? None?
No, not really. This is in line with everything that we've discussed the last few months regarding the debt that we're taking out for this year's projects and, and equipment replacement. Yeah, everything is, is as it was the last time you've seen it, and the resolution and pre-sale report from Ellers is, is all put together detailing the, the issuance of this obligation. Yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Nothing, okay. We have a motion by Manke, second by Peterson. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, B, review bids for 2025 curb stop replacements on East Lincoln Street. Consider acceptance of the base bid, alternate bid, and supplemental bid, and award contract to J.I. Construction LLC in the amount of $152,340. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tom and Carleen. Questions for Lauren?
I just need a few clarifications. I read through this, and I think I understand it, but basically, this is moving the, what I think of as the water shut-offs, into an area where we don't have to obtain an easement from the property owners, which is the whole genesis of this, which was a requirement of the federal funding that we're receiving it through the state and so forth. That's the basic gist of it?
That's exactly correct, yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion by Kirstover, second by Bettsen. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, right-of-way negotiating contract with Group Consulting LLC for East Lincoln Street project in the amount of not to exceed $19,500. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tom. Questions, comments for Lauren? I guess not. Okay, we have a motion by Peterson, second by Kirstover. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, change order number one for well number three rehabilitation contract with G.H. Fendorf and Son Corporation in the amount of $71,421. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Jason and Amanda. And this is again Lauren's questions for discussion? Please, Lynn?
I guess I would like a little bit of commentary on this, Lauren. Does this feel like a large oversight or a very big surprise? You know, when, as a layperson, I look at change orders, $71,000 is like, not nothing. And so I guess I'm wondering, what do you think the impetus of this was in our bidding versus what it's coming out to be?
Sure, that's a really good question. I would say that items one and two here are understandable ones and not supremely surprising. Number one came from the Department of Natural Resources during their review, and it did kind of come in late. And this does happen from time to time when you get different reviewers. So that's not a huge surprise. As kind of noted in this memo, item two was flagged pretty early on after bidding. There was one firm that had a much higher number than all the other firms, and so our engineers were wondering what was going on, and it turned out it was a misinterpretation on the part of, I think it was three out of four or four out of five, as to the length of column piping. So we were aware, right from the time that we awarded this, that this was going to come through. Item three, I think it's fair to say, is an oversight, and it's something that we've had quite a few discussions internally about, and I know that Rukert-Milke has had quite a few discussions internally at their end as to how this happened and why it happened. After all of those discussions, we did come to the conclusion, based on kind of a number of calculations, that regardless of how or why it happened, financially for the village, it does make pretty obvious sense to the tune of about $500,000 over 20 years to move ahead with upping the contract price to incorporate these requirements and using that safe drinking water loan money. And I would add just commentary on my own, that especially after, I think it was Wednesday last week, this does add a degree of certainty in kind of an uncertain world, but it's certainly something that should have been caught, and that's a very fair concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Mickey, second by Peterson. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight E, First Amendment to amended and restated development agreement with GAD Bodie LLC related to the Bodie Howe Brewing Company Development located at 201 Concord Drive. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tim. This is something that we've discussed and agreed to in closed session. Additional comments? Hearing none. Motion by Peterson, second by Higgins. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight F, New Oregon Senior Center Facility Project One. Presentation on new facility project status, proposed concept site design, proposed demolition site plan, and proposed construction phasing and project schedule. Staff recommendation, motion to approve the plan, plan, and the plan. Jason and Tom. And I think Jeff Vine is here to talk to this, or no, not to this item. Yes.
Yes, you want to talk to this.
I know it's boring, but, you know, it's hard to keep up.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Vine. I'm the owner's rep for the new proposed Oregon Area Senior Center. And I guess what I would like to go through, do we have the slides with the site plans and all of that information? So I'm kind of just going to go through those in order, Lauren, if you can help me with So we've got seven or eight months of work to get you guys caught up on. We, I came on board in like August. We went out, had architectural firms, so we've had OPN and civil engineers, and so we've been working on this with Rachel for quite some time to get through the concept phase and kind of figure out what we want to do with the site. So I'm going to run through all of that as quickly as I can for you, to get you kind of up to speed, and then there's some other things that we're going to ask you for input on tonight. So the first thing that we've got is the existing site, and I'll go through the proposed site plan and all the work that we did with that, but let's just start from the very beginning. So we've got this property that the village owns. The USPS building is the one that's at the top of the page there, that's at the upper left-hand corner. Below that is the existing senior center. And then to the right of that is the old library that has now been vacated, and the USPS building is also vacated. As part of looking at the site, there's some utilities that need to be relocated that kind of bisect the site east to west, kind of right in the middle of everything. And then there's some asbestos abatement that needs to happen in the USPS building. We did testing at all three buildings. There's a little bit of abatement that needs to be done at the senior center, but that will happen later in the schedule when we vacate the senior center. And there wasn't anything that needs to be abated in the old library. So that's good news. If we move to the next page, so what we're planning is that regardless of the timing of the new senior center, it makes sense to demo, to demolish the USPS building and the old library. There isn't any use for those, and there's more risk and hazard having them there. So at some point in the near future, we want to take those buildings down. So we would abate the asbestos in the USPS building. The fire department is interested in using those buildings for training. That would potentially happen in May and June. And then after Summer Fest, which I understand is an important event, we would wait and we would do the demolition after that, so that we wouldn't be conflicting with that. In the schedule that I'll talk to you about a little bit later on here, demo bids would be due May 8th, and we would demo, as I said, July 1st. But then, we're going to demo the buildings and disconnect the utilities, but we would leave the stormwater management in place for those existing parking lots, and we would leave those parking lots in place. So they could still be used, and we would still use them to manage stormwater while we're waiting for the eventual senior center project to come along. If we go to the next slide, the first thing that we were considering was just, you know, what do we have to work with here? So the gray area is the village-owned property that's inside the right-of-way, and then we took a look at the right-of-way on Brook Street, Waterman Street, and Park Street as potential places that we could do some work and figure out how to design what we need to design for the senior center here. And again, you can see that the senior center there is highlighted in yellow. If we move on to the next slide, we came up with a proposed site plan here. And so again, it's been since September that we've been working on this. So we have OPN Architects, we have JSD, who's the civil engineer, we have Doug Gallo, that is a consultant that's working for OPN, that the village was adamant to have him involved, and he's a good resource as a senior center expert. So he's helping with the design, both interior and exterior. We've been working with the village staff, so we've had Rachel and Elise, we've worked with village engineering, with Lauren, and with the village's consulting engineer, Rukert-Milke. We've met with the fire department, we've met with the police department, we had two meetings with our building committee, and we went to plan commission for initial concept presentation, which is similar to the plan that you see here, to get their input, and we got that approved, or we were encouraged to continue moving forward. So things to consider here, you know, we're trying to, and we studied this when we were looking at the site for the library, we're trying to put a building on a fairly small piece of property, and we don't have enough room for parking for the building. So we don't have specific parking requirements, because we're in the downtown district here, but we certainly have opinions on what kind of parking we need to serve the senior center, and especially when there's larger events. So one of the first things that we looked at was, we've got to find a way to get our hands on some more parking, or maybe some shared parking. And then another consideration of the layout of the site plan is that Rachel has to operate and be able to survive during the course of the timeframe that the new building's being built. And so we came up with a phasing scheme where we can keep the new senior center operating until the last minute, and then have her vacate when the new building is ready for her to move into. And so the new building is located on the site to avoid the existing senior center. Other things that we looked at, well, it all kind of came down to parking, and then we need some area for stormwater management. So there's an area on there that's green, well, let's just talk about the building real quick. We've got the senior center, and then that piece that juts off at the top of that white rectangle that goes to the west is the community gymnasium, fitness center for the senior center, but then there'll be some shared use for that. And then just to the left of that gymnasium is stormwater management area, and then there's another stormwater management area out in Waterman Street. So with what we need to do for stormwater and what we need for parking, there just wasn't enough room on the site. So two ideas came out of that. One was, what if we vacate Waterman Street completely and use a portion of that street for parking that is actually controlled and for the senior center? And then we could use part of that Waterman Street right-of-way for stormwater management. And then another idea that came out of our meetings as far as parking goes is that there's a reconstruction for Park Street that's been contemplated in the near future here, because it needs to have a full reconstruction for utilities. And when we do that, is there opportunity that we can redesign Park Street to have more parking adjacent to the senior center site, and to have more parking that's adjacent to the immediate, you know, the center of downtown. So that's what we ended up with, and think that this works out. It solves what we need to solve for parking, and it definitely has parking that can be shared both on Brook Street to the uses that you have to the north, and then for Park Street for the downtown.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Please.
That traffic on Park Street remains two-way, it's just that it's pull-in parking from one direction? Okay.
Correct, but you, yes, we, to fit it in there, it is angled parking, but the traffic will continue to be two-way. And it looks like we're restricting Park Street, but it's a normal dimension for that two-lane. Park Street right now is kind of an extraordinarily wide street. Okay, the, so the proposed building is going to end up being about 35,000 square feet. We talked about the fact that it has that community gymnasium that could potentially be shared after hours, but is connected for the senior center, so that they can use it while the senior center's in use. We've got a scheme where we've got two different vestibules into the building, so we've got secure access to the gymnasium after hours that separates it from the senior center, but during the day, that can be wide open and can be used by the senior center. Also, in the senior center building, which is slated for kind of the bottom of that white building shape, is a commercial kitchen function that's used for meal service, and then also down there is the entrance and parking and access for the adult day program. And so you'll see at that very bottom of the building, there's kind of an in-and-out drop-off area where we hope to have a cupboard area to be able to have that constant in-and-out with those uses. And we want that use to be away from the main access to the building. So the way that people get into the senior center is that, I guess it's the third arrow up where you're kind of coming into that crux between the senior center and the gymnasium, that would be the main entrance for people parking in the parking lot, and they're not having to cross main, you know, traffic flow. And then the in-and-out for the meal service and the drop-off could come into Waterman Street and get right back out onto Park Street and not have to cross those other people. And then one other note that we wanted to make was that at some point in time, there was discussion about the school district, community ed department maybe having space in the building too, especially since there might be some use of the gymnasium, but at the moment, we do not have that planned, because we are struggling with room for the building on the site, and then, you know, the other things we have to have on the site. So that is not incorporated into this plan. So before we talk about potential schedule and phasing, are there questions about the site plan or the building at the moment?
Lynn, please.
I've got a bunch.
Okay.
I'll try and make it fast, though. Okay, couple of quick questions. At the north side of the lot, Lauren, if you can scroll down just a little bit, yeah, thank you. Is there an entrance in, onto Brook Street from this parking lot? Essentially, what I'm wondering is, I only really see one exit and entrance to this parking lot, other than that drive-through section. Is, am I missing an entrance up there?
There's an entrance, right, right, Lauren circling it.
Perfect.
So that kind of dark gray area, which is part of the underlay, but there is a drive apron noted, you know, right below the word "street" to get in, and you can take that straight through and get out the bottom of the page without having to loop in past the front door. So there's four points of access, well, there's, I guess you got to come down and around, but there is three different points of Well, there's, I guess you got to come down and around, but there is three different points of access.
Yeah. Okay, um, next question, the proposed retention basin, the green one. Do we expect that that to have water in it most of the time? Or will it be mostly dry most of the time? Question, the reason why I'm asking this is lots of children for doing that community gym. Is this a concern for us that there's like?
There isn't any wet stormwater man- management ponds. So they're they're noted as bio-retention basins, so they're going to be full of plants. If you're there when there's a storm, there could be water. But and maybe Lauren knows better than I do, but I would, I would imagine within hours that that water is supposed to infiltrate. And then we're back to those prairie-type plants that are water-loving prairie species.
Jeff, I can add to that. Bio-retention basins, by definition with the DNR, have to have an under-drain underneath the soil layer. And there is a maximum time that they can have ponding in them. I believe it's twenty-four hours by design. So like Jeff said, it'll mostly look like a very big, very pretty rain garden.
Love that. Okay, and then I have just one last question for you. Lauren, if you can scroll down, I noticed that there is a section in the lower left-hand corner of the site that I think is now just green space. We're taking out those parking spots right north of Parks, yes, right there. Is, am I reading that right? Is that just green space now?
I don't know why it's green. I think it's parking.
Okay. The one question I wanted to ask, not so much of you, Jeff, but maybe of my village board members, is when we discussed the downtown master planning, it was obviously apparent that people wanted bathrooms, public access restrooms. And I'm wondering if we want to think about that corner? It's obviously not in Triangle Park, but we know that we are limited on space in Triangle Park. And frankly, I don't know about people going to the bathroom right in front of the benchell when there's people there. Just a personal thing. Just wondering if we might want to think about that by incorporating what we learned from the downtown master plan while we're looking at something like this? Just a thought.
Okay. Good one. Other, oh, sorry, were you still in process, Jeff?
No, I'm going to keep going.
I think you were, yeah.
We're not done yet.
Yeah.
So any other questions about the building or the site? And I guess the other thing to mention about the building is that, which is maybe our major variance that we need is that the building is not two-story, which is the minimum for the downtown district, but we are planning on a single-story building. And then obviously the gymnasium is a much taller portion of the building, but the rest of the the senior center is all a single story. Okay, let's move on to the next slide, which I think is the phasing plan. So there's a little bit of game of Tetris going on here. So we need to leave the existing senior center in place. So if you look at the phasing, phase one A would be the main building and we would construct as much as we could. And we would leave an area that so that Rachel can use the existing senior center and still get in and out of that building. But we would construct as much of the new project as possible. And that would, that's proposed to happen between February of next year and February of 2027. At that time, we would move her into the new senior center and we would demolish the old senior center. All that goes in its place is parking, so we can quickly get that graded, put that parking in place and finish up the site for the senior center and probably landscaping while she's in the new building because we got to wait a little bit further into the spring to be able to do those things. And then the other thing that we've got going on is that I'm calling it phase two here, but it's actually become a separate village project to reconstruct Park Street. But the first piece of it that needs to happen, which would run concurrent with our phase one A of of the project would be to get that Waterman and Park Street intersection reconstructed. Because if you look at what happens when we want to open up the the senior center, we need to have our two accesses because we're going to close the third one off with the with the Park Street reconstruction. So if we can get phase two A done while we're building the building and then when we open the new senior center, we have that entrance and we have the entrance to the north on Brook Street, then the Park Street entrance can be blocked off and that rest of that part of that project could be more independent from the senior center. But again, that's planned to happen. You know, to to follow as soon as it can, the other phases, so that at the end of 2027, that this entire project, everything that's happening on Waterman and all of Park Street would be done and completed. And we'll have a wonderful new piece to our downtown. And then if you want to scroll further, I think I've got my schedule here, so we've got everything mapped out from when we're going to have building committee meetings and all the design phases for the architect, when we would need to go to plan commission and village board for certain approvals along the way. And then we would get down to where we would be bidding at the end of this year and putting ourselves in a position to start construction in in spring of next year. And then go through those four phases there that we that we talked about, so. Any questions about timing? Yes?
Yeah, and I'm going to touch the third rail here. You know, we just had a referendum and it was overwhelmingly opposed to raising taxes for operating expenses. We're going to talk about that in a minute. But debt also affects the property tax bill. And I think we have to take a look at some of our projects and the timing of those projects and think about, make sure we're making conscious decisions about whether or not we're doing them on the schedule we had originally planned. But I also recognize with the senior center, first of all, I get senior center's been waiting a long time for this project. And so another delay is, like I said, it's touching the third rail here. But there are also issues with the existing site and I think we need to be prepared to defend the cost of waiting versus the cost of proceeding. And I think we probably need to put some work into making sure that's well-defended for the sake of the community to understand why when we said we can't raise taxes, we're doing a major project because a lot of people won't fully understand the diff- the difference between operating expense revenues and capital revenues. I don't know what it would take to put that sort of analysis together, though. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Go ahead, please, go ahead.
So I I totally appreciate where you're coming from, Tim. Having worked on the library project, that got delayed for fundraising for lots of issues. It was something, it was a project that would have cost ten million dollars. And because we put it off for a few years, it ended up costing fifteen million. I'm worried that if we don't do this now with tariffs coming, with all this other stuff coming, I need, I feel like the sooner the better and that will actually save taxpayer dollars because whether we like it or not, we have an aging population and this is going to happen. So do you want to pay fifteen million now or twenty million dollars later? That's how I'm looking at it, but.
And just to clarify, I'm saying we need to go through that exercise and add up all those dollars publicly.
Right, and one other thought, just for everybody, you know, we've been mapping this out with staff and going through it with Martin and we've got certain checkpoints here. So we went through this concept phase to get us to where we are now. The the next phase we're proposing is due to design between now and the end of the year. Actually, the next thing we're suggesting is that we demo those other buildings, which that cost isn't that significant and probably makes sense to do no matter what. But then the question for tonight is, well, should we move forward with at least the design phase? And there's, there's stop points, you know, along the way where if if things, if things change between now and December, we we have the building designed, we can stop and we can think about the timing of construction. So we're not, you know, it isn't just, let's go tonight and then we're we're in it for for all the dollars. It's let's go to the next step if we can do that and then we can reevaluate it each next checkpoint.
That's great, I would support that.
I think Jason and Tom.
Yeah. Tim, I definitely understand where you're coming from, I agree. I, one of my concerns, and I think we should do the work of cost of waiting for cost of proceeding, which is fine. I I'm not sure the people who don't want to understand the difference between operating and building are going to be swayed either way, so I don't want to pour a ton of time and energy into it if it's going to cost a lot more money and delay things. That, that being said, I I do think there are stop points coming in the future where if the economy gets significantly worse and the outlook in the, it is in the best interest of the board to pause, we'll have that option. I don't think we're there yet. And and we're going to be really balancing because of things that are out of our control, managing the, how the economy is plus the cost of materials continually going up. And so, so I I do appreciate the guidance and leadership on this. But I also looked in the, the, in the paperwork here that we've been in that senior center since nineteen eighty. And and there's a service that we need to make, in an investment we need to make in our seniors and to caring for this vulnerable population that that at least as of right now with the information I have, I I'd be very hesitant to pause. It'd have to take something monumental.
Tom?
I think in any project plan, you have checkpoints along the way. I'm very, I'm familiar with that. I mean, you come to a point, you say, okay, now we make decisions. And it's just built into how you do projects and I and I know that. And 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 those are points where we will have to make possibly some hard decisions. We have, as I think Jason was alluding to, a cost in just staying in the building that we're in. I'm trying to remember, is it three or four heating syst- five heating systems that we're maintaining and trying to run and, and, you know, Rachel, when she comes in and the heat's not on, she has a little hunt and peck games that she runs around trying to figure out which thing is not working. So there is a very good reason for doing this project and I think those reasons stand pretty strongly. But any project, we do have to look at it and there will be hard decisions along the way, so.
Yeah, I I also agree a little bit with Tim's comments in the sense that I think we just need to look at this holistically. And and I don't look so much at it as a a building cost, but more as an operating cost. I think we have to assume that this big, beautiful new building is going to get lots of use. And you guys are already stretched incredibly thin. And you rely on a huge amount of volunteers that we genuinely appreciate, but we know that volunteer hours are not reliable, nor are they easy to continue to ask for over and over and over again. And so rather than an assessment of what, I mean, I I agree, the cost of waiting, sure, that's an interesting assessment. What I would really like to keep in mind is what will we need when this building comes live in terms of adequate staffing? And how do we budget for that? Because like Tim said, we're about to have a conversation where some things are going to have to get put on the table in order to balance some new needs that we have. And I don't want to sacrifice the quality of the service these seniors get because we're not adequately staffed the way that we need to be. We already know we're understaffed. So if if we could have that discussion in conjunction with this building project, I think that would be really helpful for me to feel like we're not only bringing a great building to the community, we're also providing a great service within that building that works with our budget and and the resources that we have. If that's possible.
Okay. Were you finished with that part then, Jeff?
Yes, we do have two more items that I hope are on the agenda in quick succession.
Yeah, well, I just want to to deal with each motion separately, so.
Correct.
So on this item, we have a motion by, I'll make a second by Kirchstoffer to approve the concept plan, site demolition plan and construction phasing site plan. Any further discussion on this item?
I just want to express an appreciation for the way things were planned in order to be able to stay in the building until the new building is completed. Because I know that one of the big concerns was where would the senior center go if this, if the existing senior center had to be demoed before the other one was complete? And so good creative thinking, nice job.
All right, we have a motion, second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries, okay, Jeff. Next, what are you doing, the OPN?
Is OPN next or the abatement?
OPN.
OPN, okay. So as part of when we went out for request for proposals for architects and and hired OPN to be the conceptual design architect, we also asked them all the information that we needed for the the main phase of the project. And so at that time, we we actually negotiated with them to make sure that their their fee range that they had wasn't any higher than anybody else that committed, that responded to the RFP. And so we kind of locked in what their big project fee was going to be at that time. So this proposal reflects that. But there are, in the proposal, there are some additional items that have to do with creating a separate demo package, which wasn't part of the original RFP. And then the phasing that we're doing with the, you know, the the four different pieces of the project drags the project out just a little bit further and, you know, into finishing while we're waiting to get Rachel out of the existing senior center. So they've given us a proposal, I've worked through all of those items with them and we think that we have a good proposal for their total cost for design. And then it it would actually go into construction administration for the project. But again, all of those phases in their contract are also shown so that we have a checkpoint or a stopping place. So we're, we're wanting to approve this proposal so that I can work with Larry and Martin and we can put a draft contract together for them and and bring that back at a subsequent board meeting. So tonight, we're just asking for basically approval of the cost and then direction for us to go out and work on a contract.
So this would be item, item two, which is a proposal for the professional design services for Oregon Senior Center facility with OPN Architects Incorporated as described by Jeff. Staff recommendation, most would accept proposal as presented and direct the village attorney to prepare contract agreement with OPN Architects. We have a motion by Tom and second by Karleen. Questions, comments? Here we go, okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, item three, F3, review asbestos inspection reports for two fifty-two Brook Street, formerly the post office, two fifty-six Brook Street, formerly the library, and two nineteen Park Street, current senior center. Consider asbestos removal proposal for two fifty-two Brook Street from advanced health and safety in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Excuse me, staff recognition, motion, motion to approve present as presented, Jason and Tim. Questions, comments on this item? Anything to add, Jeff?
Just when, when will the actual abatement process take? That'll be prior to demolition, so that would take place right away or?
Correct, so I want that to happen mid-April. So as soon as we can get them scheduled, assuming that this gets approved tonight, because we want to get that out of there, then we will have, let the fire department have the buildings until Summer Fest is over. And that gives us time to put together the bid package for demolition, go bid that out and and then bring that to you guys and look at the demolition cost to make sure that we, you know, want to move forward with that. So after tonight, the next things we would do is we would, we would schedule that and then we would work on contract for OPN. And then we're in the process already of putting together the demolition construction package. construction package to be bid.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion second on this item. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Have a good night. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Uh, so, item nine is new business. Uh, items are for discussion and/or possible action. Nine A is review and discuss the outcome of the April 1st operational referendum. Who wants to take it?
Well, I don't have anything prepared for this, obviously. Um, you know, this is kind of an opportunity. If, if any of the board members wanted to make any comments or just initial reactions on, on the outcome, you can certainly do so. Obviously, this board is, is changing slightly. We have one new member coming on, so, you know, certainly don't want to make any hasty decisions or actions tonight when you have a kind of a lame duck board right now. But, um, I think, uh, certainly as part of the, the reorg meeting next week, we'll talk about, um, the village's two-year strategic plan, which , uh, we've, we're now two years in. And so, we want to update that and, and know what all the board's priorities are for the next two years. Uh, and so, I think that's a process that we could either run, uh, either in parallel with discussion on how we may want to address some of the challenges that, that we have in terms of our operations, um, and maybe some goals and objectives we want to, want to do as, as it relates to that. So, happy to answer any questions, um, take any feedback, or if there's any direction or anything tonight, could do that as well.
All right, I saw Carleen first, that's how.
I have some comments. I don't have a question, so.
Go ahead. Make your comments.
So, I purposefully did not follow social media around this referendum. I understand that sometimes it got a little spicy. Um, and this is my last meeting, so I'm going to repeat something I've said many, many, many times from this seat and through this microphone. I think folks are angry at the wrong people. The village staff and the trustees and the committee members that serve this community do it so responsibly. They take so much care to spend the village's money very well, to not waste anything, and to be super conscientious about what we are doing as a board and as staff. We have fabulous staff in this village, and we have great services. And they cost money. And we are very limited by the state government in how we can raise the funds to pay for those services. The formula for shared revenue, money that comes back from the tax dollars that we pay as Wisconsin residents to the state, that comes back to us as residents of the village, has not been updated since 2005. That's 19 years. It's not been adjusted for inflation. It has not recognized what municipalities, and as I've said before, don't get me started on public education. It has not recognized the needs of the residents of this state. We are not the only municipality that has gone to referendum in order to cover services that our tax dollars that we pay to the state should be helping to pay. And the formula that should be updated for how we as a municipality can raise funds to provide services for our residents. I hope people are watching this, because you're angry at the wrong people. If you're angry about this, call your legislators. Make noise in the state capitol. Let the joint finance committee that is holding hearings this month, two last week, one in Coconna, one in West Alice, two more in Hayward and Wausau. Not very convenient for Dane County, I just want to add, but there is a place that you can go online and submit your comments. Let them know that you want more of your state tax dollars to come back to your municipality. This board and the staff here who represent many more staff, do their jobs. It's time for state legislators to do theirs.
Okay, Tom?
Follow that.
Well, first off, thank you. Carleen, I, I mean, those, the words are obviously heartfelt, and I, I think there's a lot of truths in there. Um, I don't want to talk about what the result, and I don't want to talk about the result. We know what the result is. Question is, what's the forward motion that we have? And I, I'm, we're, we're now talking about what are we going to do, what are we going to do for the 2026 budget? And I, assuming that Martin's going to say to us something like, well, what's direction should we follow in preparing and giving to department heads to work on? And, um, this is just my opinion right now, and it's an early opinion. Uh, you know, the first thing we have to do is make sure we retain and keep the staff that we have. That, you know, we can cut services, you can put a service, you can turn a service off today, you can turn it back on tomorrow, but if people leave, or people aren't compensated, or people aren't working, that's, that's really a long thing you can't fix. And so, my first, my first reaction, and this is a first reaction, there's going to be more, but my first reaction is, you know, we have to make sure we compensate and retain our staff. And then, let's see what we can do with it. You know, there's an element, and I will, we'll segue back into, you know, what, what causes. And some of this might have been that we've done too good a job. People didn't feel any real pain. They don't feel, their, their, their streets are plowed, their, their sidewalks are clear, their brush is picked up. Take your pick. Um, they feel safe in their homes. Uh, you, you take your pick. But, you know, they're not feeling any pain. So, of course, why would you ask to have more money spent? Um, and that's just, I don't know, maybe, there's certainly multiple reasons why it, yeah, the vote went the way, and we could theorize on that. And I think it doesn't make any difference. At the end of the day, it's like, what are we going to do for 2026? And I guess if you were asking me, and other people will have that opportunity, and you will ask that question, I'm sure Martin soon, um, what's the direction for 2026? And, and I guess that's where I would start from.
Amanda, I think, and Tim, did you?
Okay, so, uh, my reaction to this was it was super frustrating to hear the comments on Facebook. Um, village board members don't generally respond on Facebook because we don't control that, those pages, the information pages. This is more for people watching at home, all right? But I, I know, we all know this, but, um, you know, w- w- we can't preserve those records, and we have to by law when we communicate with our constituents. So, all those people asking questions on Facebook, that's, please, that's not the venue. Send us an email. We are happy to respond. There's seven of us. And I did not, I hardly got any emails about the referendum. We're right here. You just have to reach out. So, don't ask Facebook questions. Those, the people on Facebook, I know they mean well, they're residents, I love them, but they don't have the answers. You got to ask us. And so, please, 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 if you have questions, if you have suggestions about areas that we can cut, if you, a- anything, please. But, but don't do it on Facebook. Do it in an email. That's, that's my request, um, that you give feedback and ask questions. Email us, please. Or call us. We have phones, too. You don't have to email. I know, amazing. Uh, so, okay, that was it.
All right. Um, well, I think that, uh, as disappointed as I am in the outcome, I think we have to accept that it is what the, our bosses told us, is they don't want to raise the taxes. I want to ensure that we take a very deliberate and strategic approach to looking at the budget, um, and not just sort of let everything slip into 5% less, 10% less. Um, I think we're probably going to have to make some hard decisions about services to cut, and I think we should do that deliberately and publicly. And, um, that's how we should approach this, rather than kind of letting it happen. I've seen a lot of companies that, when they needed to cut expenses, just went after the dumbest things, you know? Oh, we're not going to buy lunch for the staff anymore. Like, great, you just saved $500. You're trying to close a $2 million thing. And it, even a lot of the comments that came up in some of the, um, social media posts or whatever were, you know, suggesting these tiny little nibbles around the margins that weren't really going to solve the problem. Um, and I think we're probably going to have to make some substantial changes to some of the services we, we offer. I just want us to do that deliberately. I also don't think we should do it, try to do it tonight, because, you know, there's still a certain amount of processing that's happening, at least for me. I'm still a little frustrated right now. Um, and so, we have to be clear-headed about it. Um, but I will say, to kind of echo what Carleen said, is I think we have a great group of people, both elected and, um, as village staff to do that with. And I'm looking forward to working with this group of people to figure that out. So, thank you.
Do you send, then Lynn?
All right. I would, uh, first of all, like to thank everyone for their comments so far, and, and I, I definitely agree. Um, I want to start by saying thank you to Martin and to the staff for all of the work, hard work and education, and, and the extra time they put in, um, to inform the public. Um, I, I so, went to, um, a number of the information sessions, um, and they were well-done. Um, I'd like us as a board to, uh, continue to think of ways to continue the education process, um, with municipal government and municipal funding, because it is, um, not simple. And it wasn't until I was on the village board that I truly understood it. And I, I think there is, continues to be a lot of confusion, confusion with that. Um, I'd like to echo what Carleen said with contact, uh, our, our state legislators about shared revenue. Um, that message was, has started to get through. I've talked to a number of constituents who are very frustrated by that. Don't just be frustrated by, about that. Contact your legislatures, legislators, and, and tell them to change it. Um, and let's make this bipartisan. Um, and then, I, to add on to what Tim said, I, I do think, um, we need to be strategic if we need to cut back. Um, just a percentage across the board doesn't work. If everybody needs a dollar and we cut across the board 5%, that ensures that nobody has the funding. They need to make things happen. Um, so, um, I, I definitely am, uh, would appreciate direction, um, in terms of possibilities from the staff and what makes sense, but definitely also dedicated to, um, caring for the staff that we currently have, which is excellent, um, and, and maintaining that as best as possible as we make adjustments.
Thank you. Lynn, please.
Yeah, uh, I'm going to echo a lot of those things. I'm sad, I'm frustrated, I'm also in some ways hopeful, because I think one of the great things about a referendum is that it allows the people that we serve to tell us exactly what they think. And what they think is that we, um, need to reallocate funds. And so, I hope that that conversation doesn't stop there. I would really love it for this board to consider some listening sessions over the next couple of months where we listen and hear from residents outside of a computer screen, because I will also echo Amanda's point in that we cannot run the world through keyboards, nor should we. Um, so I would really like to consider holding some listening sessions and having people who feel very strongly, which is great, come and tell me what it is they're willing to give up. Because I've got police officers, I've got librarians, I've got senior center employees that deserve the respect and honor, the pay that they have worked very hard for. I've got village staff that deserve that as well. And so, I want to know from residents what they're willing to give up, because there are things that we do need to spend money for. In addition, I would also really like to put some things on the table. Um, Martin and I have had this discussion that I think, um, it's important for the board to help our staff now make some tough decisions. We've asked you guys to cut and cut and cut and cut and cut, and it's not fair, um, for you to make those tough decisions. So, again, we don't need to make any decisions tonight, but I would love to, uh, as a board, recommend to Martin to make a list of some things, some ideas, uh, not for him personally, but as our administrator, to make some assessments of those things. Um, and then lastly, uh, as Amanda mentioned, I try not to spend too much time in the social media spiral, but I have seen quite a few people mention volunteers. And I would love to tell you all about the ways that you can volunteer for our village, because it seems as if there's a lot of people that might be interested in that. And I'm not being sarcastic. I'm truly saying that I would love for you to volunteer. We need crossing guards. We need senior center helpers. We need librarian youth services assistants. We need, um, people to help clean up the parks in April. We need people to help me plant trees on April 26th. You name it, we've got volunteering. Transportation committee, all sorts of committee options. If you are interested in helping the village maintain some services and volunteer, we've got some options for you. Um, so, feel free to reach out to us, to any village staff. Uh, we'll take volunteers. We absolutely will. Um, and I do mean that wholeheartedly. We appreciate each and every one of our volunteers. And so, if that's something, I would, uh, strongly encourage people to reach out if that's what you'd like to do.
Anyone else have comments?
Can I have one more thing?
Certainly.
So, Jenna Jacobson is our assembly rep. Uh, Howard Markline, who is head of the joint finance committee, is our state senator, and he is head of the joint finance committee. So, reach out. He's ours.
Thank you. Uh, item 10, uh, reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants. This is for informational and action by the village board. Will be taken. The reports are in the meeting packet. A, the village administrator report. Uh, B, a police chief report, many release dated April 2nd. Sorry.
I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we ask, we can ask questions.
I apologize, but the sun is right in my eyes.
You're just basically working on the surface of the sun. Um, I have a quick question for Martin, if you could answer this. You met with a regional representative from Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation to review grants and funding opportunities. Did you learn anything interesting, like a lot of money we could get through grants?
No, it was, it was helpful. They, they reached out because they're, they're trying to reach out to different communities that haven't, um, taken advantage of a, a grant in previous cycles. And so, they just wanted to learn more about some of these communities, and if there's anything that, um, might make sense in terms of a fit. Um, I, I'm, I'm aware of, I think, most of the WEDC programs, and having worked with a couple in previous communities. Um, but, uh, so it was helpful just to meet the, the individual that's in charge of it. But also, we talked about some of the things going on in the village, and the downtown master plan was a really big interest from, from that individual. And, um, if we decide to move forward with some of the, um, public projects that were identified, uh, or even some private development, too, there are some opportunities to, um, apply for some of those grants that they have. So, I think it was, it was good. So, good overall.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Timby, police chief report, many release dated April 2nd, 2025. Chief?
Nothing.
Oh, okay, thank you. Questions for the chief? Okay. Item 11, announcements and miscellaneous business. Announcements, comments, communications, updating meetings and events, and... Announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village Board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. One is proclamation recognizing April 6th through April 12th as National Library Week. Anything?
This is just a proclamation the village does from year to year to celebrate National Library Week, so we appreciate you recognizing that, and we appreciate all of our staff and all of our residents who use the library.
Thank you. Other, let's see, we got Tom and Tim, go ahead.
Just a note on the calendar, that if you haven't opened your mail yet today, the assessors' hours for open book are listed in the calendar, and also in all the communications that everybody should have received. Everybody probably saw a substantial increase in their assessment, based on the numbers that I've seen. I guess my, my impression is that if you disagree with that assessment, you have a process, and there is a means to, to address it, and to, to start at, in those assessor meetings and in the open book meetings, and, and that's your best pathway to get resolutions.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. And I also just want to mention, it's important to remember that last year was a maintenance year, so a lot of properties did not see an increase last year.
And Tim?
I just wanted to go back to the proclamation of National Library Week and encourage all residents to stop by our new library that had more visitors last year, its first year of operation than the previous library had in the decade prior. So for those of you on Facebook who are saying we shouldn't have built the library, I think your neighbors disagree. Also to the Facebook comments that we should have staffed for the level of visits we were going to get, so you're saying we should have staffed for exceeding our most optimistic projections, and that would have been the more responsible way to budget. I disagree. But we have a fabulous library, and if you haven't been there, I encourage you to go to it.
Carleen and Lynn.
Just want to note that the DEI committee is listed in the calendar as having happened last Thursday. We actually postponed that meeting to this Thursday because of spring break and several of our numbers being gone for spring break, so it will be this Thursday, the 10th, at 6:30, fireside room at People's United Methodist Church.
Okay.
This is not on the calendar, it will be on the calendar for the next one, but Saturday, April 26th, we are doing a tree planting event at J.C. Community Park. Lauren and Nick from the Public Works Department have been awesome in helping us get prepped and ready to go. It'll be easy peasy, come and plant a tree, feel good. 9 to 11 a.m. on the Perry Street side of J.C. Park.
Be there. Well, I think I want to acknowledge, this is Carleen, trusty, Carleen Fench's last meeting. Appreciate her time and, and contributions to the board, including starting and getting the DEI committee up and running, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome to comment, Carleen.
Well, I did make some comments last time, and I think I've probably said enough this meeting. I really have enjoyed this, this experience. It's meant a lot to me, I've learned a lot, and it's just such a pleasure to serve with this board. It's been, it's been great, and thanks to the community for writing me in and then electing me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say too, a few words about Carleen. I think you've been fantastic for this board. It's been a pleasure serving with you. You've taken this responsibility seriously and been a good steward of, of public funds, and been really good for staff and morale, and, and your knowledge and, and expertise has been valuable, and it's, it's been great, and we'll miss you on the board. You know, I'll still see you, but, you know, well, you'll be around, but like, but, you know.
You walk across the street from a border.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, and then also a welcome to Paige Knipfer, who will be taking Carleen's seat on the board. We're excited to have you on board, too, so.
Any else? Anyone, department heads or staff announcements?
I just have one brief announcement. Lynn touched on this earlier, but the month of April, the Oregon Area Wellness Coalition is hosting their community park cleanup. So you pick the day, you pick the park, you can do it yourself, grab a group, whatever you'd like, and clean up one of our village parks, or you can go to Brooklyn as well. For more information, it is on the village Facebook page, as well as the park board packet.
Lynn, please.
I'm sorry, I thought Leon was going to say something else, which reminded me, we have a new member of the village staff born on Friday.
Yes.
And so Elise is out with a brand-new baby, and we hope her all the best during her maternity leave and the work she does for us.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Let's see, 11B, future agenda items. This item gives village board members the opportunity to place a topic on a future agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Carleen?
There will be a proposed submission for the Oregon Observer from the DEI committee at the next meeting, and I do, are, are you coming on Thursday? Paige is going to attend the meeting on Thursday, so perhaps she'll bring it, or another member of the, of the DEI staff can, or committee, sorry, not staff, committee, can bring it for approval by the board.
Okay. Any else? No? Okay, item 12, closed session business, items for discussion, possible action, under Wisconsin statutes, 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C. Considering appointment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Attendance is limited to the village board, as discretion and a necessary staff and any other individuals whose presence is necessary for the business at hand. Item A, village administrator performance evaluation. Looking for a motion? Jason and Tim, Mr. Roll Call vote.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Dan Kempten?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
We are on call session. Yeah.
Lauren, you need that some sunglasses. Do you need me to stay for a reason?